All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special Audit Committee meeting for today, May 27, 2025. We are honored to be here today, celebrating Memorial Day yesterday with the City of Glendale here. Yesterday was a very touching event at the, here at City Hall. It was great to see everyone that was in attendance. So we want to start off our meeting with our agenda. If you can start it off, please.
Item number one, roll call. Committee members Zaria Davidian.
Present.
Jack Mavien.
Present.
Denise Miller.
Present.
Christopher Saturian.
Present.
And Chair Alex Parahom.
Present.
And with us, just want to welcome the newest three members of the Audit Committee meeting here today. We have Denise Miller to my right. Welcome. And then we have Zari Davidian. And to my left right here, we got Christopher, last name?
Saturian.
Saturian. Welcome.
Thank you.
Item number two, business agenda, Part A, Report of Recording Secretary Regarding Posting of Agenda. The agenda for the May 27, 2025 Special Meeting, Glendale Audit Committee Meeting, was posted on May 21, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. A special public meeting of the Audit Committee is hereby called to meet at 2:00 PM on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, in the Municipal Services Building, 633 East Broadway, Room 105, Glendale, California 91206, to consider the following items of business to it.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number three, Oral Communications. Discussions, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. The committee may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The special meeting, Glendale Audit Committee Chair, may refer the matter to staff for investigation and report.
And I have no cards here in front of me, so we can move on to next item.
Item number four, Approval of Minutes, Part A, Minutes of the Audit Committee Meeting Held on January 30, 2025.
Now we only have two folks that can approve, right? So from the past meeting we had, I think only two are able to vote?
I think there were only one, and I believe since we only have one member from the past meeting, and the minutes can be sent, can be a note to file.
Okay, so let's, I need to file the minutes of the last meeting that we had back in January. Right, what was that, January? January 30, 2025. Next item?
Item number five, Action Items.
All right. No action items besides 6A, right?
Correct.
Item number six, Reports and Information, Part A, Internal Audit Activity Report as of March 31, 2025. Natalie Manami Valdivia, Principal Internal Auditor.
Thank you, Ani. Good afternoon, Chair Parahom and fellow Audit Committee members. My name is Natalie Manami Valdivia, and I'm the Principal Internal Auditor within the Management Services Department's Internal Audit Division. I'm happy to present to you the Internal Audit Quarterly Activity Report for the quarter ended March 31, 2025. As you can see on the screen, I will walk you through each of the seven sections of our Internal Audit Quarterly Activity Report, starting with the projects completed. So as of March 31, 2025, and we completed two internal audit projects that included the Workers' Compensation Disability Settlement Process Audit, and also the Procurement Card Industry Compliance Audit, otherwise known as PCI. Both of these audits were completed by Senior Internal Auditor, Ani Antonasian, and she has prepared a PowerPoint presentation to walk you through the audit, including the objective, scope, the methodology, as well as the audit observations and recommendations.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Committee members and Chair Parahom. My name is Ani Antonasian. I'm a Senior Internal Auditor at the Internal Audit Division. Today, I'd like to review with you an audit that we recently completed for the Workers' Compensation Disability Settlement Process at the city. So the workers' comp at the city are fully outsourced to a third-party administrator, but they are overseen by the Workers' Comp Division of the Human Resources Department. On July 1, 2023, the city entered into an agreement with the third-party administrator to provide services that include, but are not limited to, adjusting and managing all of the city's workers' comp claims, bill review, utilization review, and other duties. So let's talk about how the process works a little bit. So the focus of this audit was specifically on the disability settlement, not the entirety of the workers' compensation process. So the initial stage of the workers' comp settlement process begins once the injured worker reaches MMI, or otherwise known as Maximum Medical Improvement. And this is a very simplified version of the process, so please keep that in mind. This prompts the primary treating physician to provide what we call a WPI percent in this report. That's a whole person impairment rating. So this rates the injured worker's condition and provides whether the injury is wholly industrial, non-industrial, or a combination of both, right? It was caused on the job, or it's not related, or it's a combination. If the injury is caused partially due to job-related factors and partially from non-work-related factors, they call that apportioning, apportioning due to non-job-related. So the employee may also see other physicians throughout the claim process that may provide other WPI percents related to the worker's condition. Finally, both the employee and city have legal representation. During the claim settlement process, the attorneys follow the California Labor Code and translate these medical WPIs to permanent disability ratings. And so this is kind of the formula that's used for you to easily follow, again, very simplified, WPI to PDR, which also then translates to a compensation amount that the injured worker receives at the end, if it settles. In addition to these permanent disability ratings provided by attorneys, workers' comp also utilizes two other rating methods. A California State Disability Evaluation Unit may also be reached out to, to provide a rating, and that's a completely independent rating as well. And per our workers' comp division, they try to get these ratings as often as possible. And they also use an independently contracted vendor to get, again, permanent ratings, permanent disability rating. The final stage of the workers' comp disability settlement process begins typically when the employee and the city attorneys have determined proposed compensation amounts. Upon receipt of this information, the TPA prepares and provides the city with a written authorization report. We call it the TPA SAR in our report. And this TPA SAR provides various sections pertinent to understanding the brief history of the injury, ratings from all the medical reports, amounts paid and reserved on the claim, proposed settlement, and the pros and cons of that proposed settlement. The city's workers' comp then reviews this information and sends to the city manager and prepares also a similar report that's also a settlement authorization. And this is for the CM's review, and he reviews this document essentially and makes a decision to settle or not, right? And this report oftentimes is a central piece of documentation that management receives, and it was a focus of our audit to ensure that it's accurately presenting and is conducive to decision-making. The various settlement types that we reviewed are stipulated award. So this includes a provision for future medical care, so that's ongoing treatment that the injured worker would receive and would get benefits, compromise settlement. So this involves multiple claims and fully and finally closes all liability with the injured worker, and findings and award. So this occurs when parties do not agree, and a workers' comp judge has to make a determination. From the ones that we reviewed, there were only stipulated awards and compromise settlements. This is just a little bit of statistics for you to consider. Total number and amount of settled claims from October 1, 2019, to September 30, 2024. Please keep in mind, 2019 and 2024 are partial years due to our, the period that we reviewed, and the costs, the settlement of our amount hovered around 1 million to about 1.5 million yearly, and the total settled claims in the full year's range from 45 to 68 in number. The objective of this audit was to determine whether the city has established adequate controls to ensure that contract provisions are appropriately followed by the TPA and administered by the city. The scope of the audit covered 280 claims, workers' comp settled claims, from October 1, 2019, to September 30, 2024. The audit process includes interviewing city staff, reviewing workers' comp claims data, reviewing the professional services agreement scope for the third-party administrator, performing detailed test work on those SARS that it was referring to, performing detailed test work on invoices, and reviewing applicable late payment penalties. To review the summary of audit results, there were six improvement opportunities that I will summarize for you in four categories related to quality control, contract compliance, invoicing and penalties, and KPIs and policy update. So on to the first observation that we noted is on quality control. So to review this process, we reviewed a sample of five of these settlement authorization reports that are taken to the city manager for approval. And we performed a step as this, final report is one of the end documents that is prepared, that summarizes everything that's known to date for a claim. And they provide a summary of the injury and all those key findings. And walking into the process, we imagined that as we asked for support, it would be easily retrievable, and staff would be able to provide and substantiate all the key numbers and findings very easily, but that's not kind of how it panned out. It was, it took a long time to review each claim. As, as you can imagine, each claim does take a number of years. It could take a number of years. So the workers' comp division reviews all types of claims. So it took a long time, however, all five, of all five claims that we reviewed had settlement dates in 2024, and they were based on injuries that occurred before 2024. And so our recommendation from here is, because it was hard to substantiate, and it took a long time, we recommend that a key documentation be more readily available to review through the creation of a reference guide to source documents. And this is kind of further, this, this observation is further kind of proved by the second point. Out of the five claims that we reviewed, there were four that followed the traditional route. They, they were stipulated awards. And all four claims reviewed had accurate final settlement amounts, but there were typos that we noted. And this is, again, key documentation that's sent, oftentimes probably the single documentation. And you can review in the audit report the kinds of findings we had. Final Permanent Disability Rating Percent, three whole person impairment percents. There were typographical errors. The, the final thing to note is that the final compensation amount was accurately calculated and paid out to the employees, but the presentation of information can be improved. And finally, another key finding is that workers' compensation is complex, right? And when you're reviewing a document, you want to ensure that it's medically based. And what is medically based is this whole person impairment rating. And you want, if, anytime there is a permanent disability rating, you want it to be easily tied to a whole person impairment percent. So we would like to make that distinction and recommend that anytime we are quoting any permanent disability, that we tie it back within that single document to the medical basis. One of the documents that we reviewed also had a different actual payout than the settled amount, which is often an upper threshold that is negotiated, that that's authorized. And we recommend any of these deviations be documented in the claim file as well. The second observation has to do with contract compliance. Prior to the final saw that's prepared and sent for the city manager's approval, the TPA also prepares a similar SAR that's shared with HR. The Professional Services Agreement notes that these TPA SAR should include the amounts paid to date, reserved on the claim, contain a detailed pros and cons section. We didn't really see any of that as we reviewed those five. So we recommend that workers' comp works with the TPA to ensure that these components are included within their documentation. And also coordinating with the TPA to develop documented internal workers' comp procedures in detail. That's part of our PSA scope, and we would like that to be implemented as well. Invoicing and penalties is the next audit result. So one of the first ones is regarding a small overbilling for a refund for the self-imposed penalties. And the recommendation is to obtain the refund for the overbilling. But more importantly, obviously, this is very low materiality, but on a more systematic basis, just to give you an idea, the city spends on average $80,000 a month and pays this TPA to review our claims. And we have different types of claims, right? Indemnity, we have future medical indemnity costs on a unit rate, has a higher cost. So we need to ensure that anytime they send us the bill and has indemnity, that they are indeed indemnity claims. So we want a more systematic review of analytical procedures, not just spot checking, to ensure that they are billing us accurately. And also anytime a claim may change status to indemnity, that's, again, a risk factor. We would like to be notified of those changes, so that we know that when we're going to be billed higher, at a higher rate. Also, we get billed from the TPA on outstanding open claims, right? Not for the closed claims. So keeping a close watch on the open claims is also important. So working with the TPA to get, review longstanding claims and why they're open to date is important. So we're recommending that. And also requesting reimbursement for TPA penalties and reviewing penalties periodically. The next finding is on the KPIs and policy update. So we noted that there were no KPIs established to monitor the workers' comp program at the city, and we recommend establishing metrics, for instance, closing ratios, to understand how fast were closing ratios, delay and denial ratios, examining the caseload, and to periodically monitor these and discuss performance if the performance falls below the established metric, target. We also recommend updating the admin, administrative policy manual. This is on the city side for the section related to the workers' comp administration process, as it contained references to forms that are no longer used. This concludes my presentation. I'd like to take this time to thank Human Resources Workers' Compensation Staff for their assistance throughout this audit. Paula Adams, Chief Human Resources Officer, and Dania Portillo, Workers' Comp Administrator, and I are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. I noticed it was 667 hours to complete this. That's a lot of time on this. What areas, out of those different audit areas that you had, which ones you spent the most time on and why?
So as I noted already, when we walked into the process, we thought substantiating those TPA SAR reports would be very easy, but it was very time-consuming. The back and forth of getting medical reports, deposition reports, and all involving to substantiate all those facts and figures took a long time.
And with the KPIs that you had, looking into, are there any metrics for departments based? Like, you noticed there's a department that pretty much has more claims involved compared to others?
Or? So generally, safety personnel, there are more safety claims. There are more safety claims than non-safety personnel.
Okay, great. Any, Commissioner has any questions here?
If you have any recommendations to prevent silver injuries or claims?
Right, and that's an important question, and often comes up with workers' compensation, but that wasn't generally in the scope of the audit. It was very specifically focused on the end process with ensuring that as we approach settlement, that that process is accurate, has adequate controls. In a previous report that we've performed, the, actually, the police department asked us to analyze different factors that lead to police officer injuries, and we have recommendations in that report on how to mitigate as we identified risk factors that lead to injuries for police officers specifically, who are leading the kinds of the claims for the city. But not in this report.
Two questions on Exhibit 1. On the total number and amount of settled claims, can you first off speak to 2020 and identify if, how many of those are COVID-related or as opposed to workers' comp? And secondly, can you identify where 2024 is going, given that it's a half a year? At least in relation to 2023?
Sure. So we focused, this, the presentation and in the exhibit was to provide a general context of the claim amount. We did not focus on 2020, so I wouldn't be able to speak to it, but if Dania or Paula have, do you remember if there are more claims in 2020?
Just to put context around my question, from the graph I'm looking at in 2020, there are 68 claims. And really, what I was trying to distinguish is if those are identified as COVID, if COVID was classified as workers' comp or not?
No, the majority will be non-COVID. Non-COVID-related injuries.
So if you had to speak to why there was such a large number in 2020, just curious, could you?
The nature of claims is unpredictable, and 2020 was a high-reporting year.
And then can you identify where you think 2024 is going, at least in relation to 2023?
I would say 2024, it went pretty well compared to 2023. We have to remember that those were years within the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic. So 2024 does not seem to be an unusual year. It seems to be within regular functionality.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Now, did you say the TPA that you guys are using, you'd be paying $80,000 per month on them?
That's, yes, approximately, it's $80,000.
And is this all, the way it's all managed, is it a, an electronic format? Or is all, everything paper-based nowadays?
The billing itself?
Yeah.
I believe it's, do you receive a paper invoice? Yeah, it's all electronic.
Because you mentioned earlier, there's penalties involved. We incur some penalties on, on some of the invoices that we're paying, because we're not getting paid timely enough? Or is it mismanagement of the, of the paperwork?
Right, so I think, yeah, so it's, it's not mismanagement. They're self-imposed by the TPA in this instance, because they're managing all of the claims. And it's a self-imposed 10% increase whenever the, for whatever reason, it might be a late indemnity payment that's sent to the injured worker. And it is typically triggered when an employee discovers, when the employer discovers a delay in issuing the payment. So it's essentially the, the city is mitigating the risk instead of getting a larger payment later, or, you know, you're just, essentially, the city is saying, we're just going to self-impose this 10%, and that's a standard across this industry.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the report. Anyone else? Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. On to the next report.
All right, next report?
Yes.
The PCI, huh?
The next audit that I will review is the Payment Card Industry Compliance Audit. For our new members, for the benefit of our new members, we'll be covering this at length. We have a shorter version. It's not that next slide. So the, the City of Glendale accepts payment cards as a form of payment for fees. And as a result, the city departments are required to comply with the Payment Card Industry Data Security Standards, which is shortened to PCI DSS.
That's really short.
Very short.
Didn't get a chance to blink? All right.
Working for some reason. Let me try to. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please.
It's frozen.
Maybe this ran out. Yeah, let's, let's just click on the slides. Thank you. We can just continue maybe without the slides. So these standards, these PCI DSS standards are set by the five major credit card brands. That's Visa, Mastercard, American Express, Discover, JCB International, formerly known as Japan Credit Bureau. And these standards are collectively administered by Payment Card Industry Security Standards Council, which are comprised of those five credit card brands. This council was founded in 2006 by American Express, Discover, all of these, and the founding members share equally in ownership, governance, and execution of the organization's work. So why do we care about PCI compliance? First and foremost, we want to protect our customers' cardholder data and maintain their trust and confidence. Additionally, it is required. And if we are out of compliance, we will be subject to significant fines and penalties. We may be able to, our ability to accept payment cards may be terminated, and obviously, prevention, prevention is cheaper than mitigation. The PCI DSS level of compliance is based on the number of payment card transactions processed. So, perfect. As previously mentioned at the July 2024 Audit Committee meeting, Bank of America notified our city that its PCI DSS compliance level was updated to a Level 3 merchant, which is from 20K to 1 million transactions, based on a number of payment card transactions processed. To ensure compliance with the PCI DSS, the city hires what's called the QSA, a Qualified Security Assessor, to perform an annual assessment and prepare and submit a formal report on compliance, shortened to ROK, for the city's validation. A ROK is required for Level 1 merchants, and is optional for Level 2 and 3 merchants. PCI DSS has six goals that include 12 requirements. The first is to build and maintain a secure network. For instance, the two requirements within this goal would be install and maintain a firewall, configuration to protect cardholder data, and two, do not use vendor-supplied defaults for system passwords and other security parameters. Next, securing cardholder data, maintaining a vulnerability management program, implementing strong access measures, regularly monitoring and testing networks, and maintaining information security policy. Am I able to click now? Or no? Okay. So I will review three slides next as to what information we're allowed to keep, what we're allowed to keep but have to encrypt, and what we're not allowed to keep. So this is the first one prohibited to keep. So the first is the chip. We are not allowed to keep any data in there. The CID, which is just for American Express, that's the card ID number located on the front of the card. The CAV, you may also know, know it as the CVV code. And any data on that magnetic black stripe, we are prohibited to keep. Next slide, please. This next is payment card data that we're prohibited to keep unless encrypted. And this would be the PAN, which is the primary account number. And this would be the PAN, which is the primary account number. In our city, to reduce the city's risk, the credit card numbers are not maintained at all. And if they are, we immediately shred them in a cross-cut shredder. Next slide, allowed to keep. We are allowed to keep the cardholder name and the expiration date of the card. And why do we do these audits? To demonstrate ongoing compliance and to demonstrate our ongoing commitment to PCI DSS. By regularly checking our processes, we can proactively identify any deficiencies timely. These internal audits also play a vital role in preparing the city for its annual QSA audit. And finally, these audits, most importantly, raise awareness with the city staff about PCI DSS requirements. The objective of the audit was to determine the city's ongoing compliance with its PCI policies and procedures. And the scope is based upon the PCI DSS in-scope requirements as defined by the external QSA that we had come last year. For this calendar year, audit generally performs three of these audits. So you will hear about these PCI audits three times from us. This is the first one, current audit for the calendar year 2025. We have six sites that we reviewed during this one. No systems were reviewed. Five will be reviewed in total during the next two audits. And 16 tasks that the PCI team performs throughout the year, we also reviewed. The general audit process involves site visits, all the sites that process transactions, system reviews, and the calendar task verification. What we, what do we look for when we go to the sites? We review the updated procedures with staff to ensure that they're well acquainted with them and are practicing them, perform walkthroughs of their credit card transaction processes. We verify their understanding of the PCI policy. And also, we compare the device serial numbers to the control. And we review the tamper logs. And we also confirm that all of the employees that process transactions have been appropriately PCI DSS trained. For the systems portion, again, in this one, we didn't perform. But generally, we, we review attestation of compliance for the third-party service providers that are involved with the city, declaring that they have met PCI DSS requirements. We review the contracts with them to ensure that the contractually obligated portions are in compliance. And also, we verify system security configurations, comply with the system policy. This is for those calendar tasks that I mentioned. The, the city treasurer's office, in coordination with our information technology, have different tasks that they perform throughout the year to ensure compliance. And as internal auditors, we just check to ensure that these tasks are being completed as they're stated. So some of these things include, we have a comprehensive PCI DSS tracking document that we ensure is up to date. The annual PCI DSS training is completed for all city employees that process transactions. The PCI team is holding quarterly meetings. Vulnerability scans are performed, and other tasks on there. Summary of audit results. So we reviewed six sites and noted that three sites had exceptions. And these exceptions were related to the performance of periodic tamper seal reviews. So two sites had missing dates where they didn't perform their, log their review. And the completion of the requisite PCI training for a few employees. All these exceptions identified were subsequently remediated by the applicable departments. And we also reviewed 16 of those calendar tasks by the PCI team throughout the year, and we did not note any exceptions there. These were the summary of findings. And this concludes my presentation. I would like to thank the city treasurer's office and city department staff for their assistance throughout this audit. The Assistant City Treasurer, Guy Murray, and Marie Boyagi and city treasurer staff and I are here to answer any questions that you may have on this audit. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we always have this audit, PCI. So one question I do have on this one is, which I didn't hear this time around, which is good news. Access to the system? Did you do that type of audit? Where, who has access that were no longer working for the city?
Yes, terminated employee user access. So that's not part of this audit, but that is a continuous audit that we perform. And I believe we have results that Natalie will cover.
On that one, okay. Cool.
Good question. Have we had any meaningful changes to the QSR or the guidelines?
Yes, so the PCI DSS has new requirements, 4.0, I believe, 4-0-1. That internal audit, actually, we reviewed, we did a gap analysis between our old, the old standards and the new standards. And we'll be prepped to go for the system review, the ones that I mentioned, we'll be doing in the second and third audit. I, I do not want to speak, I'm not an SME on PCI DSS necessarily, but we ensured, we did a thorough review, and we'll be covering all of the new standards. And we also consulted with the QSA, who will perform the actual assessment.
Thank you. And explain the tamper review process. Like, you looked at the, the actual machine and, and see who was tampered with?
Yeah, I know, we say tamper seal. What does that mean, right? So each of these sites that process transactions, and I'm sure you've, as you've shopped, you know, when you go, there is a device where you swipe your card or you insert the chip. In our city, we also, we have two devices. So aside from the chip and the swipe, you also have a PIN pad. And both of those devices have a seal that controls and ensures that it hasn't been tampered with. And each of the sites, or all of the staff that process, they go in every morning or depending on the schedule of review, they ensure that, that seal hasn't been tampered with, and they just initial. So when we talk about tamper seal reviews, that's what we're referring to, is that they're logging and ensuring that the devices haven't been tampered with.
And those employees that weren't, that weren't trained properly, or that haven't been trained, is that just because they were new employees? Or is it because they just forgot about them?
No. So for one of the sites, they were seasonal workers. And we ensured, we spoke with the supervisors. They hadn't processed transactions from the point of their training expiration to the time of discovery. So that was good. And upon discovery, they have been enrolled and probably already completed the training. They were seasonal workers.
Okay.
And did not actively process.
Yeah. Okay, great. Anyone else in the committee?
One question. Is there any specific department that's dealt with more PCI standards compliance relative to other departments?
Like our stellar performers or something?
You're not just generally asking, one that has more issues compared?
Oh, I see.
That stood out more.
Right. I'm not sure we disclose that necessarily or do it like a systematic review. The findings themselves are few and far between, as you, as you noted.
Right.
So I wouldn't necessarily want to focus on a single audit department.
I see, okay.
We're good, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Ani. So I'm going to continue on with the internal audit activity report. And Section 2 is our projects in progress. And as of March 31st, 31, 2025, we had one project that was in progress. And that is our take-home vehicle audit. And that audit is being performed by our internal auditor, Daniel Mitchell. The objective of this audit was, is to determine whether there's adequate controls in place to ensure that the city's take-home vehicles are being managed and utilized appropriately. So Daniel is currently in the process of finalizing the draft report and meeting with the, the applicable department heads to discuss the audit findings. And we anticipate that that audit will be issued this quarter and presented to the audit committee at the July 30th Audit Committee meeting. Moving on to Section 3, the continuous auditing. So let me just take a minute to explain. Continuous auditing is an, an automatic method that we use to perform auditing activities on a more frequent basis. So this one uses analytics and audit software to take data that's available to us to analyze. So it allows us to use those tools to more efficiently review a large data set and to cover a larger population and provide management with a timely assurance over key business controls. So this past quarter, we completed two continuous audits. The first is called our user access controls for active directory. And in that case, we have two sets of data. We have our employee listing, our, our active employee listing. And then we also have a listing of the user access that is our user, our active directory user access. So basically, we're comparing our active employees to the enabled active directory users. So this test covered active directory users as of a point in time. So it was done on February 24th, 2025. And then the test results were shared with, and corrected by our information technology department on February 25th and shared with management. I'm happy to report that there were no enabled users for separated employees. So the second continuous audit was related to P-cards or procurement cards. And the objective of that audit was to identify areas of non-compliance with the city's procurement policies and procedures. So there were nine tests included within this particular P-card continuous audit. And it was related to split payments, cardholder approvers, and duplicate payments. So the split payments and, so there, as I mentioned, there were nine tests. So there were two related to the split payments. There were four related to the cardholder approver. And then there were three related to duplicate payments. And basically, we compare those data sets and we manually review the outliers. And so based on these tests, we found that there were split payments and, that split payments, that there were 10 incidents of split payments identified. So the transactions that Ani reviewed included 8,133 P-card transactions and totaled a little over $2 million for the period of October 1st, 2023, through March 31st, 2024. And the duplicate payments tests covered 3,886 P-card transactions in the amount of a little over $1 million. So as I mentioned, there were 10 exceptions related to split payments identified. And then these recommendations were provided to the affected departments and basically consisted of asking management to remind their employees of the procurement card policy and procedures and to utilize purchase orders where applicable. And, or to consider increasing the single purchase limit of the authorized cardholder in accordance with their business need. Or possibly, in the event that exceeds their single purchase limit, to consider finding another departmental employee with a higher limit to process that particular credit card transaction. Section 4 is outstanding audit items. I'm sorry. Section 4 is the outstanding audit items. And internal audit conducted follow-up on outstanding items by working with each of the department representatives to ensure that our audit recommendations were timely and appropriately implemented. So this past quarter, there were seven projects with a total of 31 audit items that were reviewed. And as of March 31st, there were eight items, there were eight items that were added in response to the two audits that Ani, Ani walked you through. And then there were eight items that were implemented. So in the end, we have 23 remaining items as of March 31st, 2025. Section 5 is the outstanding Priority 1 audit items. For the quarter ended March 31st, 2025, there were no outstanding items with a Priority 1 risk rating. And so just to give a little bit of background, the Priority 1 risk rating is given to audit items representing critical control weaknesses that could potentially expose the city to a higher degree of combined risks. And Section 6 is the outstanding audit items, meeting audit committee discussion criteria. And in response to Resolution Number 2, there are three events that would trigger internal audit and requesting that city department directors attend the audit committee meeting to discuss the status of particular outstanding audit items. So those three events include when a audit item status is changed to not implemented, or when an audit item has not been implemented within two years, or again, when the audit item has not been implemented within three years, at which point it would be considered not implemented and internal audit would discontinue follow-up on those particular items. So for the period, period ending March 31st, 2025, we didn't have any audit items that entered one of the three categories mentioned. So the seventh section is advisory services. And this section is, basically lists those committees or teams that the internal audit team is asked to participate on, and mostly in advisory capacity. So for the quarter ending March 31st, 2025, we participated in three teams or committees. And that included for the city treasurer's office, the Investment Policy Advisory Committee, as well as the procurement card industry compliance team. And also for Glendale Water and Power, the Energy Risk Management Committee. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Are you, are you able to share the 10 exceptions you had for the P-cards? Like, what type of exceptions did you actually have?
Sure, I can share those. And so the split payments are basically, every cardholder is given a single purchase limit on their, on their, on their procurement card. So in this case, the exceptions consisted of either one employee or multiple employees splitting a single transaction in order to make a purchase above their single purchase limit. So in one case, or in several, I guess, let me give examples of the kind of exceptions that we noticed. So in, for example, there could be one employee that has a exception, or a single purchase limit of $1,500. And say, it's, the total purchase amount is 1,600. So the test basically will go in and take a look if there is the same, the same cardholder, same merchant, same, similar amounts on similar dates, either exact or similar dates. And that would exceed the person's single purchase limit. So instead of, because the employee might not be able to process a $1,600 purchase, they may have split the purchases into two purchases in order to circumvent the controls. And there are other instances where it was multiple employees that split a single purchase that were identified.
Now, is the, is there, what system are you using for the P-card management internally here? Is there, is there software that's used that an employee submits their P-card usage and then they will, sorry, they will submit it to management for approval? Is that how the process works?
Yes, currently, the, the process is, you can make charges on your card. And then on a monthly basis, we submit those, those charges. The credit card statement is, is given to each cardholder. You basically attach all of the supporting documentation. And then it's sent to your cardholder approver to review and approve. So the, it's basically done by paper and then uploaded into Munus. So I don't know that there's a particular system. Other than for the procurement card purchases, we do request a download from our, our deputy finance director, who's able to, to provide us that, that supporting documentation.
And the policy here at the city is, is it, they need to submit their expense report for approval within that month timeframe, right? After the month ends? Like, they got 15 days or so? Or how's that?
I am not sure of the exact days. I know that when I get my statement, I make sure to do it quickly and, and to submit it for review and approval. I'm sure if it's not submitted timely, they will get a phone call to, to submit their documentation.
Okay, good. Anyone else have any questions?
I have more of a question, just to make sure I understand the process, being, being new to this. So a split fee according to the policy is possible. Is it possible or not? Can they go beyond their 1,500?
They should not go beyond their 1,500. If, if it's an operational need or a business need, then our recommendation is that management, consider increasing their limit if that's a business need. Other than that, they are not supposed to split a payment in order to circumvent the single purchase limit.
So, so the policy does not identify anything other than? So, so the policy does not identify anything other than, don't circumvent, I mean, or let me take out that word, don't go beyond 1,500. The policy's a yes/no?
Correct. It is whatever single purchase limit you've been assigned.
So when you find in your audit, can you just state, I'm just curious, when you find in your audit that someone does go beyond it, even if the circumstance makes sense, what's the next impact? Where do you go with this information? Do you go back to HR?
So in these cases, we went directly back to the cardholder approver and the department head. So our recommendation was that the department head remind their employees of the procurement card policies and procedures. So in these cases, I believe that all of the charges were legitimate charges, so it would be a matter of either increasing the limit or having someone with more purchase authority to process the transaction, or creating the purchase order where applicable.
Got it. So then again, I would just close with, from your report, because you, where these questions are coming from, when you use the word circumvent, in reality, there is no way to circumvent it through this audit process, because it's a yes/no, and if they come back where they've exceeded it, there's a process for follow-up on that. And what you found is that all seven of these charges were legitimate?
Correct.
Yeah, that's a bigger, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I mean, I think my question was more around that, was, were those few findings out of many legitimate, or was it something that was not, was it legitimate? And you've already answered that question, so I think that was the most important thing on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you. Great report. Next, add him to the agenda, please.
Item number seven, Audit Committee or Staff Comments.
Do we have any staff comments?
I actually do have staff comments.
Uh-oh.
So I just want to take some time to acknowledge some significant transitions in our internal audit function, both at the committee level and within our internal audit team. So acknowledging our outgoing audit committee members, first, I want to express my deepest gratitude to our outgoing audit committee members. So please join me in extending a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Edmund Cachadorian for 10 years of dedicated service, as well as Mr. Edwin Belen for two years of dedicated service to the City of Glendale's Audit Committee. Their dedication, wisdom, and commitment have been invaluable to ensuring a strong foundation for the city's financial and operational oversight. We are incredibly grateful for their service and wish them all the very best in the next chapter and their future endeavors. And then welcoming our new audit committee members. As we bid upon farewell to our outgoing audit committee members, we are enthusiastically welcoming our newly appointed audit committee members, and we're confident that the diverse experience and fresh perspectives will strengthen our committee. So I'd like to, on behalf of the internal audit team, welcome Mr. Christopher Satorian, Mr. Zari Davidian, and Ms. Denise Miller, as well as to acknowledge the reappointment of Mr. Jack Mavion. We look forward to working closely with you, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And recognizing our outgoing senior internal auditor, so now shifting our focus to our operational audit team, I want to recognize a key individual who has been an integral part of our internal audit department and our work family. So our senior internal auditor, Ani Antanasian, will be moving on from the city, so this will be her last Audit Committee meeting. She's been an outstanding contributor to our internal controls, our operational efficiency, and risk mitigation efforts over the past seven years. So I want to thank you, Ani, for your contributions, and wish you every success in your next chapter. So you will definitely be missed, and I will miss your expertise and your dedication. Moving on to introducing our new internal auditor, as we mentioned at the last Audit Committee member meeting, we were fortunate enough to recruit Daniel Mitchell. So Daniel Mitchell is our new internal auditor that started with us in the beginning of February. So he joins us from PricewaterhouseCoopers, and he brings a strong background in audit. He's an excellent addition to our internal audit team, and he brings valuable skills and a fresh perspective to our ongoing efforts. He's already hit the ground running, and he's been working on the take-home vehicle audit that we mentioned earlier as the project's in progress, and like I mentioned, he'll be presenting that audit to you at the July 30th Audit Committee meeting. So we're excited to have Daniel Mitchell join us. So thank you very much for all of your attention, and these transitions mark a new chapter for internal audit, but I'm confident that with all the talented individuals in both our audit, our audit team, as well as the Audit Committee, will continue to strengthen the city's compliance and efficiency, and work towards reducing any risks and identifying some cost savings. Thank you very much.
Natalie, I knew it. I knew you were going to come with something like that, but in regards to Ani, Ani, thank you again for doing such incredible work since you took over a couple years back as our secretary.
Thank you.
So now we have the final replacement. I know, we're looking at, we'll have to be nice in the next couple of days, but I appreciate the new team that joined us. It's great to have a new slate of audit commissioners here, and it's great to work alongside folks that I knew as well, Denise Miller, I've known her for a while, and you guys, I'll get to know you. That's the term I have left, it's not that long, I think, I don't know. But thank you again for the great comments, and I appreciate it. Well, next time, we'll make sure you don't give us any bad news, though. But Ani, it's a pleasure, I've been working with you for many years, and we're going to miss you. Best of luck to you and your future endeavors, and hopefully, hopefully, you won't be going too far from the City of Glendale audit.
Thank you so much, Chair Parahon. It was a pleasure working here. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, great. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item is item 8, New Business.
Any new business? Anyone to add? Nope, we're good. All right, excellent. All right, next item, please.
Item number nine, Adjournment.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll call. Oh, we don't need it? All right, good. Let's get out of here then. All right, thank you very much.